Let's do it.
That's the wall. Flight nine o'clock. Minimize this.
Is Ed gonna drink?
Want to make sure everybody can hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay. Everybody turn their cellphone off? I haven't turned mine off, so... Just turn it off to vibrate.
Leave it in the car. I said, leave it in the car.
Okay, good morning and welcome to May 27th Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start with roll call.
Mick Alroy? Here. Millie?
Wayne. Are you here, Wayne? Say, "I'm here."
He must be having issues.
Say, "I'm here." He's here.
Good morning, I'm here, Wayne Millies.
Here.
I thought you guys were AOL.
We're doing roll call. Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please stand and join me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You were in sync, Wayne.
Good morning.
This is the public comment time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate and publicly comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission the same as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The meeting can be viewed at Tulare County Economic Development Facebook page. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time it comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the chair. Note, in order to be considered by planning commission testimony on a public hearing item, it must be given at the time scheduled. So what we're going to do is I'm going to ask anybody who wants to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. And then I will also give like 60 seconds to anyone who's listening that would like to call in at 624-7013. 60 seconds starts now. Seeing that no one has commented on the public comment, I will close the public comment. And I will go to approval of the minutes. But one of my fellow commissioners would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the Tulare County Planning Commission dated May 13, 2020.
Roll call.
I need a second.
Thank you, thank you.
Mick Alroy? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yeah.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to consent calendar. To members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set for three minutes, so please adhere to this time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting email as the item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name, address for the record. Emails should include the following subject: Agenda number, and can be sent to the clerk of the planning commission at planningcommission. That's all lowercase. It's planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. That's planningcommission, all one word, lowercase, at co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment in the record, but some comments may not be read due to the time limitation. Comments received after the public hearing has been closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes... No, let's see. This is very confusing. So what I'm going to do is open the... Okay, okay. So we're going to go to item 4A, which is an extension of time EOT 20-005. It is a consent calendar item. And there will be no public hearing. There will be no staff report. And so I'm looking for a motion from my fellow commissioners to approve resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, or in between? Is that okay?
Well, if you get a second, then I'll make it. We'll do comments. Do you give a second then?
I don't know yet.
Okay, Steve?
I'll make the second.
Okay, and then Maria has a question?
Why do we... This was from 2008. Why do we keep extending the time? Don't laws and all that change in between and we have other considerations to think about?
We'll take Aaron Bach, Mr. Bach.
Chair. On the type of extension here, say, a variance setback. So the changes in the laws don't necessarily affect this action. But in and of itself, yeah, EOTs give us staff wide latitude to bring them forward or not. And so we look to the impacts of the project, so... You'll see this with other maps. We tend not to do more than two, the EOTs. But it just depends on the, again, the impacts of the project.
So was this originally from 2008 or 2018?
The original, this action, I believe, was '08. Is that correct? Yeah, so this was '08. Right. So they've been using EOTs to keep the project alive.
This is a good thing for our community. It's a camp for kids. Any other questions, Maria?
No, good.
Okay. I'll call for the roll call for the vote, please.
Mick Alroy? Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson? Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to item five. And this is public map hearing. All actions on maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate hearing. There will be no staff presentation. This is just like the one before. Members of the public, you may want to participate via phone. Call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the board to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live. Audio stream will be included in the audio recordings. The timer will be set for three minutes, so please adhere to the time limits. If you choose to call in, you may participate by submitting an email. As the item is being heard, emails should include sender's name, address for the record. Emails should include following subjects: Agenda number, and can be sent to the clerk of the planning commission, which is lowercase, planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record. But some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing is closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the meeting. So we'll start... There is no... Do we have... There's no staff report on this, so...
Chairman Whitlatch, we would like to pull item 5A.
Okay.
We have the request from the applicant. They do want to make changes to this item.
Okay.
In April, could you give us the date? We'll re-notify because of the changes, but what date are we going to hear this again?
June 10th. Continue to June 10th.
So if we get a vote to continue that item?
Okay, so I think I'll just... Let's see, there... Do I need to open the public comment on this?
Not on this item, but...
Not on this item, okay. So I'm looking for a motion by a fellow commissioner to extend this to June 10th, time certain?
I'll make a motion that we extend the tentative parcel map number PPM 20-011 to a date certain on June 11th.
June 10th.
10th.
For a second, please. I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Yes. Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Pearson? Aguilar?
Yes.
June 11th. I just wanted to say that June 11th is my wedding anniversary, so I'm thinking about it.
Should we bring a cake? So we'll move to item 4B. It's another tentative parcel map, PPM 20-014. And there is, this is a... I do open the public hearing. Does anyone like to come comment on this particular item? If not seen, I'll close the public hearing and go to the... My fellow commissioners to make a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion to approve historical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 20-014, and waiver of the final map.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Roll call.
Yes. Millie?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to go to 6A, which is a public hearing. Public hearings to the members of the public. If you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio streaming and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set for three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as the item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the following subject: Agenda number, which in this case it's 6A, and can be sent to the planning commission. Planning commission, that's one word, that's the email, Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received before the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record and if received before the end of the meeting. So we'll move right along to A with staff report. This is the final site plan for PSR 20-003, West Coast Billboards and Lori and Steve Holick. April.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch and commissioners. My name is April Hill. I'm Planner 3 at Resource Management Agency Economic Development and Planning Branch. Co-applicants are West Coast Billboards and Steve and Lori Holick. West Coast Billboards for...
April, just stop for just a minute. Can everybody hear April in the room? At all? She's free.
He's on the microphone, okay. Co-applicants are West Coast Billboards for two billboards, one on each of two parcels, and Steve and Lori Holick, proposing a RV storage facility for recreational vehicles, boats and trailers. Properties are owned by June Canby and Sandra Ballard, Mrs. Holick's mother and aunt. The final site plan would allow construction of two outdoor advertising signs. The RV storage facility is on a 1.37 acre parcel in the C3SR service commercial site review combining zone, which is why we are here before you. It is inside the Tulare urban area boundary. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law with a 10-day comment period. No comments were received from the public. Properties are located on the west side of State Route 63, Moody Boulevard, about 300 feet north of Avenue 252, Pacific Avenue. And that's in the city of Tulare. Caltrans requires construction of a standard drive approach that ties into the existing flow line elevations, a state encroachment permit, and an irrevocable offer to dedicate nine feet of additional right-of-way to the state. This right-of-way dedication was negotiated down from 23 feet. The irrevocable offer of dedication shall be recorded prior to or concurrently with the recording of the resolution. Caltrans asked that curb and gutter be constructed along the project site's frontage to SEPSR 63, and the commission may defer construction of the frontage improvements until the highway is widened. We have photos that were sent with you, sent in the packet, and I will be projecting at the end of the presentation. The project site is subject to the county and city of Tulare's memorandum of understanding, which says that small standalone round residential projects smaller than two acres do not need to meet city standards. The city had no comments on the billboards. They responded last Tuesday that if the RV storage facility wants access from Pacific Avenue, they will need to construct a drive approach there. The 1.37 parcel is completely within the C3SR zone, and the second parcel is 10 and a half acres in size and has split zoning with C3SR zoning in the eastern portion by State Route 63 and AE20 zoning in the western portion. Both the billboards and the RV storage facility would be located in the C3SR zone. The C3 zone allows the proposed outdoor advertising display signs by right as well as an RV storage facility. But the RSR combining zone requires a final site plan to be approved by the planning commission. The projects meet mandatory findings to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan to be arranged that traffic congestion is avoided, pedestrian and vehicular safety and welfare are protected, surrounding property is not adversely affected, lighting is reflected away from adjoining park properties and roads, signs will not appear with safe traffic movement or limited visibility or depreciate the value of adjoining properties. The project is consistent with relevant policies of the general plan, including planning framework elements goals 1 and 4, agricultural element goal 1, they'll have to sign a right-to-farm, the owners will have to sign a right-to-farm notice, the land use element goals 1 and 4, economic development goal 2, small business, scenic landscapes element 1 and 2, health and safety element goals 6 and 8, transportation and circulation element goal 1, and public facilities and services element 2, 3 and 7. The aerial photograph shows the strip of businesses along State Route 63, including a church on the corner at Pacific Avenue. There's agricultural properties on the west and across State Route 63. The smaller parcel now used to contain the fencing property company, and the larger one contains the plumbing company and open space in the back that's zoned AE20. Here's the site plan for the two billboards. These billboards will be permitted by Caltrans, which has given preliminary approval. Those letters are in your packet. They'll be about 70 feet high, 33 feet from the ground. The property contains an owner-occupied dwelling, accessory buildings, and contractor's equipment storage yard. The subject site has been previously disturbed by agriculture for decades. No expansion or construction is proposed for the RV storage facility. It will not result in significant impacts, will not require additional public services. Therefore, the project has been determined to be categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and consistent with the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1, regarding existing facilities. The proposed 1.37 acre parcel proposed for the RV trailer boat storage facility, site plan for that, contains a 900 square foot office building and two storage sheds, none of which will be used for the proposed RV storage facility. The office building in the front is rented to a pawn shop. No water or sewer services are necessary. Not planning to have restrooms available to the customers. Here's the front of the proposed RV storage facility. The cement pad to the right is for the other business tenant. Here's a slide showing the next-door neighbor, a party supply business. It does have curb and gutter, but we had timing for the rain last week that shows that rainwater accumulates in front of that curb and gutter due to last week's storm because there's no drainage facilities on that stretch of, on that side of State Route 63. This ends staff's report. If you have any questions for me, please...
We'll start with Wayne Millies. Wayne, do you have any questions for April, please?
No, so the purpose of these signs, again, was to advertise the businesses there?
Offsite. Offsite businesses. The billboards will...
That's it. I don't have anything else, Chairman.
Okay, we'll go to Steve. No questions?
I have a couple. So the Caltrans is wanting curb and gutter, but the county's recommendation, as I'm reading it, is to defer that until the highway is widened? Go ahead. Okay. So my question is, is it understood or is it written somewhere that it's a condition that the applicant install curb and gutter when the highway is widened? Or is that going to become a county expense?
It'll be a condition of approval for the property owners to install curb and gutter when the highway is expanded.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second question, and by couple I mean like three or four. But second question is...
County, Maria.
I know. Is that one of the... Part of this paperwork or electronic paperwork is that it says that the construction and the maintenance of the signs has to be without access to the state route? So does that mean that they have to access off of Pacific? And if accessing off of that, do they then have to build an approach?
Well, we'll get to that, okay?
I'll ask the applicant, Jeremy Gregory, of West Coast, for that.
That's the other question. And the third question I have, and probably I'll make it the last one. The third question I have is because there's several different regulations mentioned in here, that two of them are requiring vegetation plants, you know, something, and the third one... What's that?
Landscaping.
Landscaping, yeah, thank you. And the third one is not. So the zoning is not requiring the landscaping, but two other regulations are. So which takes primary?
Through the chair, after talking with the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Holick, and looking at the site, it would probably be a little, it would probably be difficult to plant anything out in the highly compacted gravel surfaces out in front.
We could just say no landscaping.
At the planning commission's discretion.
We'll have a chance to ask the applicant, okay? So write that down, don't forget.
I have it. I wrote it, yeah.
Anything else, Maria?
No, that's all for now.
Okay. John? Yell?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. You look better about that mask on. I'm going to open up the public comment at this time, but before we move ahead, I'm going to take 60 seconds to see if there's anybody who wants to call in who's listening. So the 60 seconds starts now. So if you're listening, please call us at 559-624-7013 or email us to planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. See, we don't have any phone calls. We'll start our public testimony with the applicant. So it'd be great if you would just choose one person to be your spokesperson, or two of you can come up. So would you like to come up? Because I know the planning commissioners have some questions. And then you can give some clarification, so...
Lori Holick. Harvey trying to get started. And also June and Sandy are my mom and my aunt. Excuse me? Oh. 2090 East Pacific Avenue. So I'm just around the corner from the other driveway. So like over here with the landscaping, whatever, these properties have been commercial properties since like 1950s. So it is compacted with gravel and road base. So it's kind of hard, and we don't have to do that, I think. Also, the encroachment permit the owners are willing to do, but they're not willing to dedicate the nine feet. As we talked with a Zoom meeting last week with Aaron Bach, Caltrans people, Aaron asked them, what benefit do they get if they give you nine feet? And he goes... What's his name? David Deed said, oh, they can continue using the property.
For the records, David Deal.
And then he goes, well, what if they don't comply to the dedication? And he goes, well, then we won't allow them to get the encroachment permit. To me, that's wrong. Because we are zoned for commercial, or they are zoned for commercial. So if they're complying with the easement and they're not going to dedicate, so... So I mean, they can buy or on down the road when it's time to build Mooney. Then we can discuss all that in twenty, thirty years or whenever it is. Is there any more questions? Did I say it right? I'm like.
I have a question. Are there two entities here?
Excuse me?
Two entities. It looks like West Coast Builders and then Lori and Steve.
Yes.
They're two different people.
Yes.
West Coast Billboards own the billboards?
Yes.
Do they put anything on it they want?
Yes. They're not advertising for us.
No, they're you're letting them have space.
Yes, they're renting a space. So they're renters as I'm a renter.
Right, got it.
Although then my question was not correct. I was told it was for the businesses that were existing there.
Who's speaking?
Correct, is that right?
Through the chair, actually, April said that they'd be allowed to freely advertise for offsite businesses. That's what I is that?
That's what I heard too. So it was clear to me that it, you know, they're 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 in the advertising business. So they can put the Whitlatch Group up if they wanted to.
Yeah, but my question had been, was this to advertise the businesses that were there? And the answer was yes.
No.
I'm not making a big deal. I'm just saying that's what I was told.
But April said it was for other businesses too, so.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. And give us your name and address for the record and then.
Do I sit down now?
No, you stay.
Oh, you're hanging out.
Okay.
You should be six feet apart.
Are you family? Are you immediate family?
No, sir.
Six feet apart.
My name's Jeremy Gregory. I'm a representative of West Coast Billboards. I'm at ten fifty-six Parkwood, Madera, California is where our office is. Just to clarify, the the two billboards on the property will be for just general advertising purposes.
The question was, you're going to ask they'll be on their property behind the fence, right? And you will access on their property all maintenance of the signs, correct? Okay, keep going, Jeremy.
We should be able to access from Highway sixty sixty-three or or Pacific Avenue, which is actually owned by Alex, correct? Or Camby's? June Camby?
And. So just for clarification, you'd be willing to access not off the state route, but up.
I have a lot of flexibility.
Right, okay.
Just to clarify.
The state's saying no access off of sixty-three, so it's not a big deal at this point. But the way I see your signs are well located behind the fence. And it's the only way you really can it be hard to get from sixty-three, correct, Jeremy?
Correct.
Okay. Don't go, we have questions. So we'll start with Steve.
No, I think the answer to mine, there's two entities there that's.
Thank you.
We're going to change this time. We're going to go to Gil. John?
No questions.
Maria?
This is kind of a question for Aaron. So. Applicants representatives saying they don't want this encroachment. I'm reading Caltrans's condition of approval that there will be a nine-foot encroachment.
Well, and this is the in their conversation last week, Caltrans clarified it was a recommendation to make it a condition of approval for either fair share, as fair share as they called it, meaning they don't necessarily believe there's a strong need right now for any improvements. So that setback requirement is a little bit less. But they were saying they wouldn't necessarily grant the encroachment permit at the end of the day unless that dedication was made. But there's other aspects to the encroachment, including asphalting the entryway, which the applicant seemed like they were amenable to. So I think that's going to I don't think it was a true no, they're not going to grant it. But I think there'll be some more discussion with Caltrans regarding how that's going to work with the encroachment permit. But as far as the they did say that it was a recommendation for the setback. And they've been fluctuating on the distance the whole time from the original twenty-plus feet that was going to almost see it into the building onsite, now down to nine. But again, they don't have any immediate need for an irrevocable offer of dedication. And I'd be interested too if they were willing to if the irrevocable offer was made, if the Caltrans at the end of the day be willing to maintain the nine feet that was given to them. So a lot of those, not everybody has any concerns over irrevocable offers of dedication. But this will definitely be going into the property. For further background, these are all based as far as the dedications on the concept report that Caltrans puts out to match the RR tip and to match the statewide Caltrans plan. So they're updated every five years or so. This one did the ultimate build out would be for twenty-five more feet. But again, the realities of when that's going to happen could, yeah, it could be twenty years, could be thirty years. The thought was it depends on how the core is growing. And as the planners for this county, we have not seen a lot of development along this corridor. There was the Mooney Plan itself that was put in place in the eighties and then taken back because the new board wanted to save the agricultural land in between. But now there's not been a replacement document. So again, without without the real growth pressure along this, the impacts from this RV storage yard is going to be, you know, maybe a trip a day. So that Caltrans is not going to need that right away anytime soon. And again, philosophically, should they pay for it if they need it? Or should we give it to them in exchange for a SR review project? I I don't think we really need to. But I think David Deal on the phone was intending to agree with just the recommendation in hand. But again, that'll be probably negotiated out when they get through the full encroachment process.
If you could just get your access and you can get through that part with Caltrans, you've accomplished a lot. The footage goes all the way down to your your dad's property. It's, well, I'm seventy-five, so twenty-five years from now won't make a heck of a lot of difference, but.
You never know.
You think I'll be here at a hundred?
If you eat your apple a day, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. I'm going to be at the VA place anyway. So, you know, I wouldn't fight them on it. But if you don't have to give it to them, don't give it to them. But there's some big things in that right of way that they have to relocate. So they're called power lines and so.
Yes, and we have to relocate a lot of stuff too, because there's lots of fences. There's there's a lot of stuff when they do get there that we're going to have to come up with.
But if they pay for the power lines, that's millions of dollars. So they have to relocate the power lines before they'll ever take that right of way. So if you look at Johnny Lewis's building on Mooney, which I know some of you are familiar with, when they widened Mooney Boulevard, it took it right back to the front of the building.
Yes. That was my other question too, what about those buildings?
Well, I'm just saying it's probably not worth worrying about. If you can just get your encroachment permit for the for the driveway and then just keep in mind that that'll always be hanging over the property if you, you know, I'm not giving legal advice here, but I'm just saying it's a.
In your opinion?
It's my opinion, it's always hanging over you in the background because.
That if we don't dedicate this nine feet, that's going to be hanging, yeah, but they're dangling twenty-five later on.
Well, there's a certain amount, and I don't know exactly where it starts, except that I'm seeing here sixty feet from the center line of the highway. There's a certain amount that they're entitled to anyway. Where this nine feet falls in that, I don't know. Because I'm not out there with a tape measure, but they're entitled to a certain amount anyway.
Titled because.
Taken.
They get to take it regardless or they have to buy it?
I no, I have a property in in town. And I have to maintain the sidewalk area, the front landscaping, et cetera. City has an, what do you call it, an easement on it? It's my property, but people get a walk on the sidewalk and et cetera. There's there's different kinds of easements. So Caltrans and or whoever has jurisdiction over this has some kind of entitlement. So maybe Aaron can explain that.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, because the cities do have public right-of-way easements. Caltrans doesn't have an easement in this situation, but they are they would have to go through the eminent domain condemnation process. What Caltrans is asking this planning commission and staff to do is put this condition on here because they do not want to pay necessarily the full price for the right-of-way take in the future. So it's not like the city where the city can just say, hey, our right-of-way goes so far into your yard. They don't have that power. So they'd have to go through the regular process to condemn their full right-of-way.
So here's a question for you, Aaron, and my finger moved the page, so I'm not sure exactly what point it was on. But where is the sixty-foot, where does sixty feet from the center line go? And whose easement or jurisdiction is that? The center line of the roadway?
The center, the. Right now, it is not part of Caltrans property. They don't necessarily have it on a plat map or anything for the full concept report right-of-way. So I think if the ultimate right-of-way they were requesting was to go from a hundred and ten feet to a hundred and fifty-six feet for the ultimate right-of-way. So they. The only powers they have is to ask for conditions as part of their project.
Yeah.
And or the condemnation power. In other words, the the state needs so great at that point, they'll get it, you know, but they'll have to go through the regular eminent domain process. They're just asking for the the handout, so to say.
So did I hear you right, that they don't have right-of-way?
They have the.
They don't.
They don't actually own it the way the.
Exactly.
The city or county would. But they have the police power and the state power and the need to build out the roadway ultimately. So that would be part of the eminent domain case.
They don't have the power right now.
No, they can't, they're asking us to to enforce their concept report. And they even stipulate in here that it's going to be made a part of the their their own entitlement. They have the encroachment power. So if you want to access their right-of-way, that's.
Isn't that illegal though? Isn't that threats?
No, that's that's a consideration, that's nexus, that's quid pro quo. And the quid pro quo here is in exchange for this approval today that they are asking this commission to grant them, force you to grant through irrevocable offer of dedication nine feet to.
They're looking what may happen in the future or may not.
It may not, so I mean, that's.
Right, so it may not happen, so why should we or why should they dedicate?
They're buffering, they're hedging, they're hoping that you would do that. We have not granted the irrevocable offers of dedication in every instance. Sometimes Caltrans is because this is sixty-three though, and this is important. And you can see how sixty-three has been built out through the city of Visalia. They just don't want to ultimately run into those same problems. But like, you know, they didn't do it when we had some of the projects approved through through Goshen. And they had to go through the regular eminent domain process. So they just try to get it when they can, so.
Okay, so.
That's all they're asking for.
I found what I was asking for, just for clarification. And sorry, I mean, I need to ask him some clarify, Aaron, some clarification questions. So I was reading earlier in this section or earlier on this document that there's construction forty-five feet from the center line. But I'm looking at point nine three, so page four of fifteen. And it says setback, the building line setback along State Route sixty-three is sixty feet from the center line of the right-of-way. So somewhere there's fifteen feet already being used of that center line right-of-way. That's what I'm reading. So what am I, I guess, not getting about that, that it's already being used?
Well, as far as the, are you talking about the shoulder?
I don't know what's included in all that.
See the fifteen feet off the shoulder there? Do you have an answer, April? So. Regardless of what they believe is being used, they just want nine nine more feet. So I can't answer your question whether nine feet falls into the fifteen feet they believe is still using for the shoulder or whether that actually ends up on a map here. But the the request is for for nine additional feet.
This is like a question that as planning commissioners, we can't say because the only way you can say is you hire a surveyor and they put stakes in the ground. And so it's nine feet from, I don't, you know, we don't know. And so basically, that's up to the applicant if they feel comfortable with it or not. And the second thing is, is that if they want their right-of-way, their Caltrans is asking us to require that. But it doesn't sound like we have to, so. And then if the applicant is not happy with this, then that's where you hire a surveyor and a lawyer and all that kind of stuff. We're just here to approve the use.
And since they don't have intimate domain, the property owners do.
I mean, I'm just not cutting you off, but I'm just saying legally. That's not, that's not our.
And through the chair, it actually looks like there is a utility easement, twenty-foot utility easement. That might be what they're referring to, just based on the site plan illustrations, which is for the overhead power lines as well.
So I guess a way to summarize it for myself and maybe for the applicant is, and I interpret things funny sometimes, so maybe not for you, but for me for sure, is that whatever the existing easement is, not what we would or would not give them now, but whatever the existing easement is, is there and it's going to be there.
Yeah, if it's for the somebody else's easement, not Caltrans.
From center line is there already, so that's going to continue.
Right.
Okay.
We're not giving the easement, we're just.
They're 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 asking for more, which is a dedication, a dedication.
Take that in or take that out or leave it in, so, okay?
There's got to be some history there up and down that boulevard.
Well, there is, go down Mooney Boulevard when you get into Visalia. You can see when they widened it to six lanes, they went right up to the front of the buildings. And so this family knows because historically I have represented them ten, what has it been, ten years ago or? So.
Yeah, we've been there a long time.
Yeah.
The supervisors approved an old plan in the seventy-two, so a long time ago.
So it's, and I can't remember off the top of my head with the other two projects we've done off of Mooney, but I don't, I know they were different aspects to those projects. So this this one's a little bit tougher for staff because this is just a formality to have a site plan reviewed merely because the owner's changing the operations. And they have a new tenant there changing the operations and then they have to go through this process, you know? Any other, if this was just C three without the SR overlay, we wouldn't even be talking about this. So that's that's where I, staff has a little bit more of a problem with Caltrans nexus for asking for this merely because you have a site plan change. And yeah, if there's a lot of traffic, then maybe it makes a little bit more sense in kind of a SEQA type in analysis. But again, when it's one or two RVs and it's not really changing anything, it gets tough for staff. Because Caltrans always has their their hands out, whether for fair share monies or in lieu of. So I kind of would leave this up to the applicant and Caltrans to work up ultimately through the encroachment process. But when I was on that phone call last week, I heard Caltrans was favorable to not necessarily requiring the nine feet. They did use the word recommendation every time, but they absolutely want the asphalt apron and everything else put in. And the applicant, if they don't want to do that, they can just go off of Pacific and not deal with Caltrans at all.
Correct.
You know, you say you have to relocate stuff. Those power lines, they've got to relocate those first. And so this this is a huge project if they widen into that area, so.
On the other side of the freeway, where the power lines are, that would be ideal.
Those power poles are, you know, I'm a developer. When they say that, I had a whole development held up for five years because. When they say that, I had a whole development held up for five years because people didn't wanna relocate those power lines, and so these were in the middle of the road for five or six years, so. It's, I don't think it's worth getting upset over, but I just want to warn you that it's always there, and Caltrans does pretty much whatever they wanna do, you know, and so save your battles, so. We may not require you to do that, so. And you can always appeal our decisions to the supervisors, how many days?
10 days.
10 days, so. I think you might just kinda wait and see what we do, and maybe you might be happy.
Wait and see what you guys wanna do.
Right.
When do we get to hear that?
Soon as you sit down.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions for me?
No.
I'll close the public testimony, and we'll go to staff's recommendation.
Do we have to wait a minute for the online people?
I did initially, at the beginning, so I did a little different, so.
Staff recommends that the planning commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA for Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new, new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve final site plan PSR 20-003.
Through the chair, I would add that per the applicant's request, that they wanna strike the nine-foot requirement as a condition from Caltrans.
Okay, so now we've had the recommendation, I'm going to go with each commissioner, so we'll start with Steve.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Maria? Okay, Maria's fine, John?
Good to go.
Gil?
Yes.
And...
Does a point of clarification for staff, that it's with or without the nine feet?
It's without the nine feet. And Wayne, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, I'm good.
Okay, so having heard that, then it is modified without the nine feet.
And regarding the landscaping, through the chair, with the landscaping?
It's not possible, so no landscape.
Not requiring landscaping. That's another, second modification.
Yes. So would I, do I have a motion to approve this project presented by the staff, someone,
Go ahead, Wayne.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR 20-003.
With the two modifications, correct?
With the, with the two modifications.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
A roll call?
McAlroy?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion carried, so, thank you. You got what you wanted, so.
I'm confused.
You don't have to dedicate nine feet, yeah. Just FYI, be aware of whatever else is already existing as an encroachment, you know, measure your feet.
Just one more statement, there's two of the Lewis, Johnny Lewis's daughters that are here. Johnny was a great man, and if you ever were at his ranch, he had mules, and mules are like dogs, you know what I mean? He would call them over and they would do whatever he said. We're glad to have had John. Okay, move on to the director's report.
Through the chair, I would give the planning commission an option. I did put a couple of PowerPoints together where I previously discussed with the board about our general plan initiations, or we can put that on as an informational item next time, it's really up to you. I thought this meeting might go a little short, so I was just gonna entertain you slash bore you to death with the PowerPoints and/or we can kick that can down to the next time, because that meeting did go a little bit longer.
What do you wanna do, Erin? What do you wanna do? You guys got places to go, things to do?
We always got places to go nowadays.
So what's my fellow board members, you wanna hear a presentation, you wanna go?
I'm here.
Maria?
What's, when's your next meeting, Erin?
I have to be on...
June 10th.
I have to be on the phone with somebody in an hour or so, I can get through these pretty quick.
How long's your presentation?
Probably all combined, probably about half an hour.
Okay, John? It's on general plans?
Yeah, well, what I had done last, I just wanted the commission up to, totally up to speed, what we had done with the general plan initiations over the last year, and also what we've done as far as, every year we have to send the state HCD a, basically a statement of what we've done with the general plan over the course of the year, and I think in between the two presentations, it would explain a lot, but it's purely director's report material, it's what I've been telling you over the last few weeks, but I kinda leave that up to you. I think...
Very articulate, Mr. Box, so we would enjoy listening to you.
Clint might want this formally on the agenda, not the director's report, so let's just go in that direction. All right, so just to give you a brief update of what we're, what we've been doing, again, we've been trying to deal with the fact that our lobbies still closed for the most part, and have all our meetings by appointments, and we've continually increased our appointment meetings from five to seven to now 10, and we'll be moving towards 15 here probably within next week. As far as people are still working from home, staff-wise, in the planning department and building department, it's pretty straightforward, send people out in the morning, and they don't really have to come to the office anymore, so everything's moving towards being electronic. We also have been working for the last year to do everything electronic, especially with our Palms program, and we are almost there with that. As far as accepting a set of billing permits, we'll actually have a portal in the future. Right now, we're still doing a lot of stuff through email, but we are capable of doing everything electronically now, so that won't be a problem in the future once we go to the next level of technology, using Palms entirely from the application process, and we're also working on a process that, we can already accept credit card billing electronically, but we are getting a, another portal that allow that to be streamlined all the way through our administrative fiscal department. So there's still another step that we incur right now, when we accept electronic payment as far as someone has to input it, this will make it all streamlined. So I'd say by probably about six months from now, we shall be totally capable of doing everything electronically.
Erin, can the county consider, or the IT folks, I guess, putting kiosks in the larger cities, you know, like Porterville, Solari, in the city hall where they, people could actually go in there and do an application through, on the kiosk, and then get it to you? Is that, is that something they, rather than have people driving around the county to do a planning permit or some, you know, the like of that?
Well, we, again, will have it possible that you could just send us your application in via email. You wouldn't necessarily even have to come in to work at the kiosk.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, we've considered...
Not everybody has a computer, though. Sometimes people, you know, they don't, they don't know what to do.
Right.
So it's nice to have a standard place that people could go, that's all I'm suggesting there.
Yeah, and, you know, it's something we could consider further, I'm sure it's been considered historically, but for the most part, by the time we get applications, they're filled out, so. And pretty much everybody does have a computer, so yes, for the few people who don't, we'll always be available at the counter to assist them. We don't have long lines out the door that would require someone to necessarily come in and use a kiosk like. Besides that, you know, as we close in on the end of the fiscal year, our numbers are gonna be a little bit different from last year. I don't really foresee us going above, much above 500 permits for the year, but we always try to do a little bit better than we did the previous year. And going back three years, when we first topped 400, 'cause back in the day it was about 250, you know, we've been trying to stay consistent with that, so. We'll have some staffing changes, I'm sure, in the future, and I'm sure we'll have to become even more efficient to just keep up with that, that high standard we've kind of created there. But I'll give my informational presentation next time and just kinda share with you where we're at, 'cause that, the general plan initiations and the general plan report we gave to HCD really spells out what staff's intending to do, hopefully within next year to make sure that no matter what happens in the economy or what arguments are made by people and objection to projects that our general plan is vertically and horizontally consistent with the state legislation. That's all I got.
Yeah, that's all you got to say. It's good to see you, Clint, if you're hiding back there spying on us, but we, we like you, even though you're a lawyer, it's okay. And any of my fellow commissioners, I like to add anything, if not...
Meeting adjourned, gotta be quick.
10 questions, no, not. Two seconds, I have slow reflexes.
Velma, are you there?
Yes.
I logged on to Zoom at about 8:30, but nothing happened, so do I just wait for it to pop up, or what? The meeting started, it was simultaneously at 8:02 or 3.
At 8:25, and, I mean, you're on Zoom right now.
Yeah, so all I have to do is get on, and then, and I saw the, the opening agenda.
Yes, it'll just log you in, there's no waiting room.
All right, so it was just a timing issue today.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Velma.